Agents.
Good evening and thank you everyone for joining the meeting tonight. Tonight, we're going to be doing a couple of things. I am first going to open up this meeting for a consent agenda approval. So I'm calling the meeting to order for a very, very brief public session and then I'll be closing that meeting and we will be going into our work session. Do I have a motion for approval on our consent agenda? Jackie?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education with the recommendation of the superintendent hereby approves the consent agenda which includes three business office recommendations.
Thank you Jackie. Do I have a second? Shaun? All in favor? Great. Thank you. So at this point, do I have a motion to close the meeting and open the work session? Lori? Do I have a second? Jackie? All in favor? Thank you everyone. So we are now going into our work session. If not, this would have been the quickest Board of Education meeting I've had in four years. And Dr. B, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So as part of my superintendent's report, I'll just give a couple of items just to say, we hope that you had a wonderful DiValli for any of our families who were celebrating this past week. And a wonderful Italian Heritage Month as well to many of our families who were celebrating all month. And as well with Halloween just around the corner this Friday, we hope that you can make it out to some of the trunk or treats and some of the fall festivals that are going on to all of our schools, in all of our schools. And that you have a very safe Halloween and trick or treating experience if you're heading out this Friday night. And tonight, I would like to welcome Mr. Andrew Watkins from Fiscal Advisors, who's going to come on up and talk a little bit about our capital improvement projects and where we stand currently. And some projected recommendations on when or how we should consider bonds in the future. So I will invite Mr. Watkins up to the podium. And as he presents, please do jot down some questions and we can certainly have a Q and A towards the end. And then Ms. Carlin and I will also talk, and I see that Mr. Sheldon is in the audience, a little bit about our draft building condition survey that was completed last year. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Watkins.
Do we have this presentation?
You do. Okay, very good.
Great.
Let's go with the paper copy.
We can make notes on them too.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
So, as Dr. Villanueva mentioned, I thought it'd be very helpful, as we've talked and worked with Linda over the past couple of months, about the current, the district's current capital project as well as any future capital projects to take a look at where the district currently sits with its capital project. The debt that's been issued for that capital project. The projected impact of the future debt on that capital project. And then how any additional capital project would impact the district's finances. So, can everybody hear me without the microphone? Good. Sometimes I have a too deep of a voice that gets a little loud, so I don't want to be hurting anybody's ears as well. So if we flip to, in the packet here, to the first page. This is the summary of debt service and estimated building aid for the district prior to any issuance of debt for the $75 million capital project. So this is years ago, before '22, when that project was voter approved. This is what the district was looking at and how they were going to input that project on top of this debt that already existed and this building aid that was already flowing to the district. And as you can see there, the district had a drop off. So if we look at '25, '26, the highlighted column, it's at $1,007,000 was the local share. And just to back up a second, the local share, what we, what you'll hear me talk about the local share is for every district in New York State, you receive a certain amount of incentive to do building and capital projects, and that's called building aid. So when you do a capital project, a certain percentage based on your building aid ratio is, generates aid. There is very complex building aid calculations that we can get into in a little bit, if you have questions. But to keep it simple for now, for every capital project that is aid eligible that falls into a category that New York State says will generate aid, you will be paid a percentage of that back. The district's building aid ratio, top of my head, I believe is 41%. Now, when you issue debt, what our job is as the district's financial advisor, is to make sure that that debt aligns with the building aid payments. So there's a lot of requirements that come with how you receive building aid. New York State typically won't pay it until a final cost report is filed, which means that you need to substantially complete the project. However, as you all know, there's a lot of planning, construction work, a lot of costs that come before you complete the project. So how you issue that debt and then align it with the building aid to make sure those payments are level and align each other so there's not spikes in the district's local share. So in summary, the district's local share is that total debt service less the building aid. And so this, where the district sat back prior to '22, was had that $1,007,000 local share starting in '25, '26, using that as kind of a base here. And then there were drop offs. And when there are drop offs, that's a great opportunity to layer in a project. Because when a district works on its budget, if you budgeted $1,007,000 in local shares, you would budget the total debt service and you would budget as an expenditure and you budget the building aid as a revenue, your estimated local share is going to be the net impact to your budget, what you need to tax. When that declines year over year, there's a bucket or room for you to add debt service or local share to that bucket. So this was prior to '22, before the $75 million came on. And there was that opportunity in '28, '29, '29, '30, and so on and so forth, to add a little bit of debt service with less of a tax impact than would occur because you could fill that bucket. If we flip to the next sheet, one of the things graphically, just a very simple bar chart, I think is helpful to see how that works year over year. So when you're looking at it from a budgetary perspective, you can see very clearly, from '28, '29, there was a bucket of expenditure there, the difference between the bars that could be filled with local share in order to lessen the tax impact. So, that was the plan, the idea for the $75 million capital project. And if we flip to the next page, we will see our basic projection. If you have a question, feel free to ask.
Is that okay? So just to...
Oh yeah, definitely.
Okay, great. Sorry, I don't want to interrupt your flow. So just to clarify, to make sure everybody at home kind of understands, the first couple of slides here were the prior bond that was approved by the taxpayers. This is what the debt and building aid ratios are amortized out for that original $48 million bond. And then in '22, at that time, the folks that were on the school board then put up an additional bond for $75 million that went out to the taxpayers that was then approved. And that's what we're going into now. These first initial slides are for existing bonds that were approved by the taxpayers prior to '22.
Exactly.
Got it?
Yes, correct. And then this, the third page on this sheet that is titled on the top, $75,555 capital project. This is, if you need some help going to sleep at night, the World Series game didn't, you know, if you're not tired from watching that last night, just take this to bed with you and try to read all these numbers and you'll go right to sleep. But basically what this is, is a schedule of the district's band payments. And then from the yellow line out, it's projected because we haven't reached that period yet where we have issued a bond for this capital project. We've only issued bond anticipation notes, which are one-year borrowings, one-year securities that are used in school district capital projects in order to phase in the borrowing to issue only the amount that is needed for the cash flow. So for instance, for this $75 million project, in '25, '26, there's $50 million that's coming due, that's been issued and is coming due. There's still $25 million that has not been issued by the district that hasn't been needed for cash flow purposes yet. It is planned to be issued in January of this year. However, that's, you know, could change based on how cash flow for the project goes from now till January.
And just to give a little context on that, thank you, Mr. Watkins, is that we are moving into now Phase Four and Phase Five, where we will start doing the HVAC project over at Greenville. And then we have a little bit more happening in all of our buildings. And that's where the last portion of this existing bond is coming in.
Correct. And as I noted earlier, bond anticipation notes are also useful because they're issued at a lower rate than serial bonds, so the debt service is lower. So they can be issued prior to the aid flowing or prior to all of the aid flowing and help to align when the larger payments will arise. But the Cliff Notes on this projection is that if you work from left to right, you get to the last column that shows the estimated net local share for the $75 million capital project. And so what will be or has been above the yellow line, what will be below the yellow line, added to that first slide of the future budget summary, the estimated debt service less the building aid. So then if you flip the page yet again, this shows that update. This shows the total debt service, the estimated building aid, and then the ultimate net local share of the district. So where the district is projected to sit after it has issued the full $75 million for the current capital project, the final cost reports are filed, and then the $75 million is issued as long-term serial bonds. And as you can see, so the far right column, estimated net local share, in '25, '26, it's at 4.3 million, and then it continues to increase until '28, '29, where it's at 5.588. It's deliberate that the plan for the financing is to wait until '28, '29 to start having those bond payments, because that also corresponds with that local share decrease that we showed on the first budget summary, so where they have the largest bucket to fill. When a district issues serial bonds, as noted, typically have higher debt service, higher interest rates, so the debt service will tick up from when they're in the bond anticipation note phase. There are also typically larger building aid at that point because it's all, the project's been fully complete, but it will still have a larger net local share impact. And as you can see from that '25, '26 highlighted row down to '20, '41, '42, there isn't a decrease or a drop because that project is amortized and the serial bonds are issued to match the building aid. So building aid is paid over 15 years, depending on when you file your final cost reports, it's going to be 15 years from that point. So it's going to flow from the state for 15 years for reconstruction projects with, which this project is. If it's a, if it's a new building, it would be 30 years. And if it was an addition project that had more addition work, then, this is a little nitty gritty, more addition work than reconstruction work in the project number, it could be for 20 years. But for, in general, the district's projects are going to be for 15 years, starting at staggering times. As Phase Four gets complete, those final cost reports will be filed, you know, after they are complete, and then the aid will start flowing correspondingly. Now, the long and short of having the level local shares, it's wonderful for budgeting because it's going to be known what is coming year over year and work in the budget. However, not having a decrease means there's not an opportunity to layer in a capital project that doesn't result in a local share increase. And so what I've prepared, just to provide the board a sense and an idea of, and if you flip to the next page, same graphical representation of where the district's local share is projected to be after the $75 million is permanently financed.
Got it. So just, again, to recap before we go into kind of potential, and then I just have a couple of quick comments on potential. But again, just to kind of recap, to make sure that everyone at home and watching or who go back and watch kind of just understands, the $75 million bond that was already approved back in '22, the local share, the impact of that has not yet hit. So what's going to happen is, we're already paying back the 48, the 75 is going to come on. So the local share of that is going to increase with what we have existently, in, existing currently in the workflow without anything net new. And I think as part of this work session is, most of you, and I think most of us have recognized, and I want to say, Chrissy, maybe it was two years ago at this point, Trustee Gagin and I walked around every single building, every single field. And I think we recognize with all of this great work that's happening and currently happening, a lot of this, I would say, was the guts, the HVAC, the electrical, the plumbing, the aesthetics of these buildings. And through coffee and conversations, we've looked at the cafeteria spaces, the tiles, the furniture in the classrooms. There is an appetite to do all of that, but there is a balance between the appetite to do all of that and also appreciating and respecting the taxpayers, of which we are all taxpayers here in this community, to make sure that we're being very deliberate and very strategic in any plans moving forward. Plans that occurred before we were here, we can't really speak to that because none of us at that time were on the board. However, the approach needs to be very surgical, very strategic, keeping in mind the impact to the individual taxpayers and the necessities of what actually need to be done for our children in the schools. So before you get to that, I just want to be very clear, based on some of the emails that we've gotten, there is not a bond date currently where we're putting up another bond in addition to this. This work session is the first step in looking at what, if anything, by the way, will be done and taken, because we do understand even just with the free lunch program, there's a real material impact to families in this community and the taxpayers. So again, we want to be surgical and strategic, and I can't say it enough, we are not putting up a bond next month, in three months, et cetera.
Correct. And that's a good, a very good lead into these next slides that will show projected amounts of projects, an estimated debt service and an estimated building aid, and then the resulting estimated local share and tax impact. It should be noted that every school district project is different, particularly in terms of their aidability and how it's paid. So these are all estimated at what we term a bond percentage, and they were all estimated at the same one. And they're pretty conservative in where they are, but that a $50 million project could have a much larger tax increase than this, depending on what the district decided to do. If it was going to build a brand-new building, then that might, that would not get the same percentage of aid that is projected here, or that a $50 million reconstruction project would be. So that's why these, while, to your point, when and if the district were to ever go down that path, a full scope would be reviewed and a very detailed analysis would be done of our office to make sure and work with the aid numbers to get them much more in line with what it's actually doing. Scope's very important to every capital project.
And Mr. Watkins, just to clarify, since we have three projections here in the next three pages, the estimated net local share in the very far right column, if we were to, let's say, go out for one of these three samples, would be on top of what we see in the previous two pages. Is that correct?
Exactly. Exactly. And since, as with the previous $75 million project, there is no decrease in that local share already existing, the full net local share impact would be felt by the budget as opposed to being able to decrease portions of it when there is that debt.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification.
So for a $50 million project, same idea, an amortization schedule of principal and interest that produces total debt service, the estimated building aid of this $50 million project would again result in 3.2 million of additional local share to what already exists. Which, when you look at that from a full value, so not an assessed value, but a full value, so once the assessment of a house is equalized using Eastchester, which I know has a little different equalization rate than a lot of other communities, but it has, it's going to be per 1,000, would be a 58 cents increase estimated. So if you just think about that from, multiply it by 600 or 700, 300 to get whatever full value for a home would be. If you do look at it by assessed value, it's 64.03. So that, it's $64.03 if you're looking at it by assessed value. But we typically look at it by full value, since that is how tax bills are calculated and what it's utilized by.
So just to interject real quick, so on that note, the per thousand numbers on our assessed values in our district here, do you have any idea of what that would be on the average household here for each project?
So for a $600,000 home, it'd be a $348 increase. I don't know exactly what the average home is. We'd have to, we'd have to work with that to get that.
So you gotta, you have to figure, at least in the last thing I received at my house, we're more in the nines on the average house. So you would take that and that would be annual, Jackie? That would be on top of, so if you just, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if I go back to the 75 that was already authorized, which is additive to the original, if I look at, let's say, the '26, '27, where the local share on that is what, 4.6? You would then take 4.6 plus your 3.2, correct?
Correct.
Okay? So your bar chart, and then obviously, this is all going to be modular between 50, 75. So if you take that number roughly and double it and add that to the increase that's going to be coming because of that payback, you're probably talking about on an average house, I think our calculation in Eastchester based on assessed values, like 2.52 is actually our calculation here locally. It's a little bit different than other communities. You're probably talking like, currently, right now, you know, depending on the value of your house, less, more, et cetera, it's probably a couple thousand dollars.
And one piece to note on that, you would be paying that for a $600,000 home, 348 annually, but it's not a 348 increase every year.
Yeah.
So once it's built into your budget, then it's built in. Your taxes would increase by that X number, and then it's built in year over year and wouldn't continue to increase. But you'd still be paying that every year towards the project. Yeah. Absolutely. So then for a $75 million project, it's an 87 cents per thousand full value. And for a $600,000 full debt value home, that comes out to 522. For the per thousand, if you just multiply that 87 by 900, whatever, maybe 750, yeah, that gets you, gets you to where it'd be estimated, yeah, would be. And then for a $100 million project, the impact is 120 per 1,000 of full value, which gets you, which gets you to 720,000 for a $600,000 home. Yeah. And just to note too, it's not to say that any of these projects couldn't be done or that any tax increase isn't, any impact of it isn't something you couldn't do, it's just to provide the figures here to guide you on where you possibly could go. One thing I did want to note, they were, for each of these projections, just to give you an idea, the aidability ratio was 85% that we use for this, which is pretty conservative. So typical projects will be more around like 90%, something like that, maybe a little bit higher than that, depending on exactly what's done. So it could be reduced a little bit in that manner.
Thank you so much, Mr. Watkins. And we may have a couple more questions.
Yeah.
Please take a seat in the audience and then we may call you back up to the podium. So one of the things, just as, as we've been kind of going through the math of it all and just understanding the sentiment and being responsive to our community, to be conservative and very prudent with our fiscal dollars, one of the just pragmatic questions that comes up is, how much more kind of meat and potatoes type of work do we still have left to do in our district? Meat and potatoes being, you know, making sure our windows are okay, our doors are okay, the things that we, are necessities. And then when can we go for something on top of that? So when we're talking about really exciting, brand-new atriums and cafeterias with windowing all over the place and new contemporary, 21st century, and again, we're 25 years already in, spaces where we have technology and contemporary learning spaces, when are we ready for that? So one of the activities that Mr. Sheldon, Ms. Carlin and I have been going through is going through the building condition survey draft. And I say draft carefully because we have the final version probably coming up after Thanksgiving. And that's where our current architects BBS has given us kind of a priority list of what is still out there to do. When you look at the Excel spreadsheet there, this doesn't certainly include everything, but it, at a high level, not only is reflective of the BCS draft... but it, at a high level, not only is reflective of the BCS draft, it's also taking into consideration just what Mr. Sheldon sees here as needs as he walks our grounds. The lightest yellow are things that are absolute priority, need to be done fairly quickly within the first one to three years. That kind of medium yellow color is, it's still a priority, but we could probably wait for that second level, and the darker tan color is, it's still a priority, but we, if we needed to wait till that third level, we could. And again, you have immediate, meaning we need to do it between one to three years, or there's intermediate, we potentially have three to seven years, just with the caveat, understanding that longer we let certain projects delay, they age, eventually more wear and tear will happen, and sometimes, if we wait too long, we'll have a more expensive replacement down the road than if we do something more preventative. So this is more for you to just consider as you go home tonight, and we can have further discussion as we get to more final drafts of the BCS from our architects. But just looking at the kind of the meat and potatoes with contingencies added in, considering a little bit of inflation, we're still looking more than seventy-five million dollars. And so when, and I'll be totally honest, I am thinking about that beautiful atrium and that beautiful, you know, twenty-first century contemporary learning space, which I know we will get to, that's above and beyond this. And so I then look to Ms. Carlin and her finance department, as I know they're new, but as we move in year over year, to look at how we can not necessarily look at capital in big lump sums, but how do we do things strategically to slowly start to move monies into capital transfers so that we can slowly save up and then execute on projects in maybe a million, or a million-five, or two million, as opposed to boom, twenty-five million, fifty million in large, large numbers. And that obviously just takes much longer. So, so those are things that we're talking about through the finance department and through the facilities department, and we do consult with Mr. Watkins, and we will continue to do that. But I just wanted to give you, and again, draft is on there really, really big, because it's it's draft, just kind of the immediate, intermediate, and then the extended needs.
So just very, like, back-of-the-neck and
Yes.
rough math, just to put it in perspective for everybody, what's categorized, and then I just do have a really quick question about that, immediate needs, one to three years, I'm totaling like fifty-one million dollars. And I just, I'm just curious, and I know that this is a draft, who determined what was an immediate need? And the reason why I ask is like, what sticks out to me is like, a snack shack for four million dollars is currently here as an immediate need in one to three years. So I'm just curious, like, that's under the high school, if you guys look under high school, you go over, it says like one to three years, I think it's labeled as like year three perhaps, you know, snack shack, four million dollars. I'm just curious for like the draft of this, like, what was the process? You know, and I'm, I'm using that one just because it sticks out to me, you know, based on the money, like, what determined, like, some of these as immediate needs? Because as we start to, like, iterate and wrap our heads around, okay, if truly this is immediate needs and it's fifty-one million dollars, then I'm going to refer back, Mr. Watkins, to the fifty million dollars here. To me, and I could be wrong, an immediate need is like, the roof is bad and it's going to leak, versus maybe some of the things that are here. So I'm just curious, the methodology there.
And, and that's where draft is super important, and this is where the discussion begins, and it should be an ongoing one. BBS does some of the prioritizing, we then took their prioritizing and then prioritized it with us, and then I always give our cabinet a fine balance, and I say, we will always have to fix something, there will always be a boiler or a roof or a carpet that we need to fix, but at some point, programming has to move forward as well. So how do we balance, we keep going with the meat and potatoes, but we also want to push programming. I have been hearing very much that athletics is a huge part of this community and something that we have been waiting for, and I've seen firsthand just what homecoming is like and what are, you know, excitement to get to states and all that kind of stuff. When we have the opportunity to have something like lights on a field, it does take that programming and student experience up, and so you will see things like, straight up, we just need tiling done in the high school, or we just need bathrooms re-done here, but we also want to see programming move forward, and so we balanced it. At the same time, the number's so large, we also know that we can't execute on this right now, so it's a list, and it can shift and change.
Yeah, and Dr. V, I think you said a lot of super important things, and just to put a little bit of context on this, and Matt, you know, you said it as well, these are problems that not, that have not come up overnight. These are things that have gone on for, lack of better timeframes, decades, and now we're faced with the problem upfront. So these immediate needs are things that could have been done over the last, call it thirty, forty, fifty years, right? And, you know, I think of the, the image that we always had of like, the technology closet with the wires that Dr. Valenti always put up, right? That was like the smallest of small. Now we have so much we have to catch up on, but it's a real delicate balance without dramatically increasing taxes. So this is something that we always struggle with, but that we're actively working towards to improve the schools and do the things that we need to do, but be fiscally responsible as well, so.
Absolutely, and I think, not to belabor the conversation, but just with the vision of four campuses, four pillars, one vision of elevating Eastchester in all those areas, we will always have things to work on, but we also want to continue to elevate Eastchester in every possible way, even if it's slow, even if it's low, but we still want to always kind of be reaching upwards and outwards. So again, this is really more for you to digest, it's not set in stone, it's very much draft, it will change, I would expect it to change, I want it to change, and then we can certainly talk more about it.
Correct.
All right, then in that respect, that was really it for our conversation this evening.
Fantastic. Christine, Lori, Chrissy, Jackie, any questions, comments, thoughts regarding the material this evening?
Can we ask about specific things on here?
I, I, the answer is yes.
Maybe that not the
But I think, and you, you tell us, Dr. V, I think you want us to digest this a little bit, go through it, maybe come back to it, because I, I think to that point, Jackie, like, if we go through, I mean, there's a lot of questions here, and I think, look, it's going to come down to picking and choosing, even with immediate, the things that are main priorities, like as an example, track and field replacement, we know we need to do that, that's, we know we need to do that. Therefore, maybe the snack shack, just as an example, again, it's all within athletics, to your point, maybe that takes a backseat for now to do the field, and so on and so forth throughout here. I mean, I will just say, it's, it's striking, like, and again, rough draft, the comparison of the, I'm just going to stick with immediate, that's where my head went, the immediate needs of a high school, just dollar-wise comparatively to the other buildings.
To a smaller school, right.
So we need to just kind of dig into that, I mean, frankly, even if I add up all the other schools, it doesn't come to what the high school is what's in the intermediate, if I put every building together. So I think this is an opportunity for us to digest this, share this with some of the other trustees, and come back with some, some pretty solid and sound questions.
Absolutely, and I want to keep saying, draft is very important.
Totally, great.
So I, I just want to reiterate, and I know it's been said once, I know it's been said twice, but come May, there's going to be the host of people of, I don't know what you're talking about, what do you mean, why is my bill so high all of a sudden? To clarify, the bond that was approved in twenty-twenty-two, essentially, it's going to start coming due. I just want to keep it simple, just, this is what the community voted on?
They're actually going to see that in their tax bill in January, because it doesn't, May is just a regular budget vote. So what's going to happen is, when that tax bill, in terms of this schedule, hits for January thirty-first, I think if you don't escrow your taxes, your first half of your school taxes is due January thirty-first, that's when you'll start to see this layering in for the local share, that's when that's actually going to hit.
Can I ask a question about that, which I'm sure that you said this already, but what is the increase from what's coming off to what's starting in January?
So, Mr. Watkins, I think that's actually one of your charts here, so.
The what's coming off in January one is, could you repeat that question?
The one that's rolling off
The ban that is rolling
Is it different than what will be starting in January for the taxpayer?
I, I think the question is also, you know, we have two days, we're going to do this year. We're doing a ban this year, and we're going to do another ban, right? So we're going to have two years of bans, they will, the bans will be slightly more each year, and then in two years from now, we'll, we'll actually go out to bond for the seventy-five point five million dollars. So this year will be a little, we don't have an exact number yet, but let's, just for argument's sake, let's call it, you know, mid-six, six, sixty-three million dollars or something like that, that's what we'll go out for in January, we'll do that for another year, and then we go out to bond. So there'll be two somewhat, you know, there'll be increases each year.
So those increases are coming, to your point, from the seventy-five million, but they haven't been fully layered in yet until all the debt is issued, and really, it's permanently financed in the terms of serial bonds, yeah.
We see, we see a reduction on the original that hits, what was that slide, Jackie? The reduction in the original, because one of them in the conglomerate is actually going to get paid, is going to be twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and twenty-nine, thirty.
Correct.
Where you see the reduction, and then to your point earlier, we've layered in more projects then, which are going to align, Linda, with the bans, but the seventy-five is going to hit for the increase. So the reduction happens a little bit, you know, for a blip, if you will, just in the grand scheme of fifteen years, you know, three or four years is a blip, for a little bit where you see the reduction, Jackie.
And that reduction has, or is planned to be filled by the seventy-five million, yeah.
So is that actually this in the chart?
Yeah. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Chrissy, Lori, anything, thoughts, anything? Okay, thank you.
And then the last thing, you will start to see some banners come up and around our community that just really does celebrate the work, because I have to say, as much as there are fiscal dollars tied to this, I mean, as a community, we have to be so very proud of the work that has happened inside of our buildings. Our children are very lucky to be in updated HVAC, newly tiled spaces, and also, you know, the, the board will certainly be walking through all of our buildings very soon, but if there are members of the public who would like to make an appointment, we have certainly in the past brought people from the public to come on in and take a look at the good work we've done. So it is something we should showcase, and it is work that needed to be done, and we should be proud that it is almost done, so it's good.
That's a great point. Dr. V, and one thing that I've, that I've shared, and I would say this to our building-level administrators, to Dr. V, and to all of our PTA executive boards, our PTAs do such a job for these buildings, for the kids, for the administration, all of the fundraising and the donating, there are things that are needed physically in these buildings, please work back with Dr. Villanueva, work back with your principals and assistant principals, you know, our kids love, you know, little dolls and pencils and all kinds of great stuff, and that's super important and not to minimize it, but donating a classroom of new furniture lasts for a really long time, way more than a pencil or an eraser. So what I would say is, these things all cost a lot of money, I would be highly interested to explore what we can do just from a fundraising perspective with the individual PTAs and some of our booster organizations, you know, very similar to the job that Mario Delara does currently, with putting in new trophy cases and raising and donating that money. I mean, that's a job well done. If there's a way for us to all kind of come together on that, knowing some of these needs, then I think that would be a really amazing thing for us as a community.
Absolutely, and I think most recently, Anne Hutch, the PTA, once again, has a large donation coming in, so we already have one flexible classroom, we're about to have two flexible classrooms, so it's very exciting, very exciting. All right.
Thank you. All right, well, if there's nothing else, thank you, everyone, for this work session, very good information, and I think we have a lot to digest and come back to, so thank you so much, Dr. V, and thank you. Go ahead, read it, Jackie. Jackie's going to go through the future dates.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
Our future meeting dates are November eighteenth, which is a regular meeting, and November twenty-fifth, which is a work session meeting.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening. I have to do a motion for a work session? Okay, do I have a motion to the work session? Thank you, Jackie. Shaun, all in favor? Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.